All right, welcome everyone. First meeting on my call to order tonight is the Lawrenceburg, City of Lawrenceburg Board of Works meeting for March the 3rd, 2025. Can I get a roll call, Mr. Fetty?
Board member Tommy Rolet.
Present.
Member Brett Bonnurrit.
Yes, sir.
Attorney Delwell.
Here.
President Kelly Malone.
Here.
And myself.
Okay. Gentlemen, I don't have any announcements for this particular meeting unless you, either you do.
No, sir.
Have none, Mayor.
If not, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So move, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and then we had a February 12th work session. Like to get a motion to approve those minutes.
So move, Mayor.
Second?
I'll second, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The only other item I have under new business tonight is the HWC contract for the CCMG. Now, this is for project 2025 dash two.
Yep.
So just that we're ahead of the game.
Right.
Well, we're always stay ahead of it so we can get our, our plans back, but just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that.
Yep. Yep.
Any questions regarding that?
I have none, Mayor.
If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I have no other new business nor old business for this meeting. You guys got anything under old business that needs to be brought up?
No, sir.
If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move.
Second?
I'll second, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. All right. Next meeting I'd like to call to order tonight is the Lawrenceburg Utility Board meeting for, uh, March the 3rd, 2025. Mr. Fetty, if I can get another roll call.
Uh, board member Tony Abbott.
Here.
Board member Dylan Little.
Present.
Board member Tommy Rolet.
Present.
Board member Lenny Freiman.
Here.
Board member Brett Bonnurrit.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Delwell.
Here.
President Kelly Malone.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, uh, I have no announcements for utility board at this time. Um, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So move.
A second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And then, uh, we also had a meeting, uh, February the 3rd, which was a, uh, Utility Service Board meeting as well. So can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So move, Mayor.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Uh, under new business, first item I have is, uh, uh, the appointment to the MPa Board. Uh, we, we carry a, an appointment on that Board of Commissioners for MPa. I think they, they have a meeting a month and, uh, I'd like to, uh, for the time being, I'd like to appoint Eric Webster to that, to that board.
My, my only question before we move on that or anything, um, do we think that it's potentially a good idea to wait until we decide whether we're going to get a utility director or not?
Well, somebody's got to fill the spot even if it's still then.
Okay.
We can always, we can always reappoint. It, it's not for like a, it's not for like a, a period of a year or anything like that.
It's only appointed until we change it.
So if, if we decide or the utility board decides to go in the direction of getting a utility superintendent or, or director, we can automatically put them on that.
The only reason why I ask is I hate to have them pick up additional responsibilities if it's the board's decision to not move, well, to move forward with getting utility director instead of not. So, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, this is more of a, uh, this, the, the person that, that serves on this board most of the time is, it's an information only. Uh, they go up and, and then retain the information and bring it back.
Okay.
But, uh, so yeah, if we go, you know, with the utility director, that, that person would be the pick to be on that board. So, does that answer sufficient? Okay, so, uh, are we okay to temporarily, I guess we'll, we'll say until, until further notice, I'd, I'd say, that we appoint Eric Webster?
Yep, I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay. A second?
I'll second.
Second?
That's fine.
Dylan, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Uh, the next item that I have is the surveillance, uh, contract. This is for the SCADA system. This is for the, the support, uh, piece of it. Uh, you see the, the pricing in there. Um, this is a yearly contract. Uh, any questions regarding that? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the surveillance, uh, contract at a total price of $23,517.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next two items are Mr. Garrett Kavanaugh. Come to the podium, please. Okay, uh, downtown water system improvement. These are for, uh, water lines on, what is it?
Elm Street and East High Street.
And East High. And this is before we do the
Streetscape.
Street, street improvement. Okay. Let's, let's take these one at a time. Let's take the one, uh, okay, I see the letter of recommendation. Um, the low bid, uh, was $1,190,500. Uh, that was Dave O'Meara. Um, just so you all know, I spoke with Hunter. Uh, the money is, is in, uh, budget for this project or for both of these projects, actually.
Right.
Uh, just wanted to make you guys aware of that. But, uh, any questions regarding?
I have one question and it's on number 13 for both of the bids that receive, we received.
Yeah.
The one is for like $34,000 and this is a water service connection, okay? And the other one was like for $195,000. My only concern would be the lower one, which was O'Meara. Are they going all the way to the new main with the service, a new service to the water meter?
Yes.
Are they splicing it?
No. It's brand new from the meter or from the main to the new meter, to the new setter, yes. Or not the new setter, we're retaining our old setters, but
I've seen the old, that lower number, I'm like, wow, that's an awful lot. I hope they're not putting a coupling underground so it is going to
Correct. Yes, one, one continuous run.
Yep. Yeah, there was some, some way different numbers in here, but, uh, that one there was one that concerned me more because I'd hate to see us have, do something like that and then tend to leak later on down the road and Right. And the street back up.
Right, right.
Okay. That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay. Um, so do we have a, a motion to approve the, uh, these are for both, both projects, right?
Correct.
The, the two, yeah, for, for the total of a, of one
Of, yeah, of Elm Street and East High, not the lift stations, a separate project together.
Lift stations, same.
But yeah, Elm Street and East High is a, one, one bid, the $1,190.
Okay. Any questions regarding, any other questions regarding? Any idea when we'll get started, uh, if you talk to O'Meara?
Um, no, the, the timeline is that we're going to have to do part Elm Street portion during summer because of school buses.
Yeah.
That's where the school buses get on. So, I, you know, and I haven't talked to them to see if they're going to start on East High Street first, um, if they're going to do both the same or, or whatever. But, uh, like I said, I wouldn't wanted to get, uh, approval, but, but they're guaranteeing me, you know, that, that we had the significant completion date, I think by August 1st. So we have enough time to blacktop.
I was going to say, would, can we, can we talk to them? And I'll be happy to be a part of that conversation if you'd like. Uh, I'd like for them to start on East High because that way if, if we want to start doing some milling and blacktopping, we can start at East High and then work our way back down.
Right. Um, with talking with, uh, Ashley, um, back there, she wants, I think they, the plan is to mill both the streets first prior to us digging. Get, get everything milled up and then we'll do the digging and then we'll replace everything back to the top of the, of the, after, yeah, the milling. And then they'll put the new stuff down on top of that.
But, but they could even start blacktopping back at East High and then, then go back and finish.
Right.
You know?
Right.
Because, you know, I just don't want to wait till August 1st. If it's a completion date of August 1st, uh, is that what you said?
Yeah, that's, yeah, when it, when it has to be done. Like I said, I, you know, um, O'Meara's pretty resourceful, a pretty big outfit and, um, I don't know that it will take them that long to do it, but
Uh, we can get, we'll get Austin and, and Ashley involved with it as well. But, uh, yeah, I'd, I'd like to see them at least maybe start on the other end and that work their way back to the schools since we can't do the school until the school's out. But, uh, that way we're not pushed for time at the end of the year.
Right.
And they got, as well got the CCMG for that over there too, as far as the streetscapes as well.
Yes. Yeah, that's why we're having to do this so quick that, yeah, the CCMG grant is for the asphalt in those two streets.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. What other, any other questions from you all? If not, I entertain a motion to accept the, uh, Dave O'Meara as a contractor, uh, construction contractor with the low bid of $1,190,500.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. The other item is, uh, lift station number 12 improvements. You, you want to say anything about that before we, you guys got any questions?
Yeah.
I might all answered last week.
Right. Yeah, it's, uh, just a total rebuild of lift station 12, which is the one right at the bottom of the, of the hill right there by the power plant. Um, it's inside the fence.
I talked to Hunter about this one as well. There's money, the money is available for this, uh, even with the, uh, we had only budgeted, I think, 515?
I think we, yeah, 480. We budgeted 480 and it come in at 580.
Yeah, that's right. And it came in at 580. So he said that we have, we have the money available in the budget, so.
Deal.
Okay. Any other questions?
What was, did, do you know what the reason was for it being higher than what the engineer's estimate was? Did they say? Has cost, like, has material and
Yeah, materials, I mean, it's just gone through the roof here lately. I mean, you, you, uh, for a certain period of time, we had to accept bids if we got, uh, for pipe. I mean, if we got a quote on a pipe, we had to accept it within an hour.
Oh, wow.
Because it was changing that much. So I think it's just, you know, the material price just, just kind of went up.
Material heavy project.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, it's all material really. You know, it's all pumps, pipe, fittings, you know, so it's, it's Yeah, control panel and that's probably the most part of it is be the control panel and the SCADA system and stuff and implementation.
But we're not doing anything to the vault, the pit itself.
Correct. Correct. The concrete stays the same.
So that's all in good shape?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not on this.
If not, I entertain a motion to accept the, uh, Dave O'Meara as a contractor for the, uh, lift station 12 improvements at a, uh, a bid of $580,900.
So move, Mayor.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Um, just, just one thing, if I may. I'd just like to let the board know that, uh, the water treatment plant SCADA system is up and running and it is operating as expected. Um, David Porter's got to come back and just a couple little details as far as just how the screen looks and whatever we're going to
Punch list items?
Yeah, we're just going to change, you know, it's just how stuff looks, but it's up and running and everything's going well with it, so.
That's great.
That, yeah, that was a much, much needed improvement.
You mean you don't need me to go over and do any troubleshooting or anything?
Yeah, sure, Lenny, you come on over.
I'll answer that for you. We don't need you to go over there.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Garrett. All right, guys, um, that's all for new business. Anybody got anything under old business?
Um, I have a question on the easements for 50. Are, are we done with those? Do we know where they're at, Dell?
We're working on them, so there was, I talked to the mayor about that before. I met with Andrew Lowmiller and, uh, Archie Crouch. There was a little confusion because we kind of thought we'd be up and running on the R50 Water Main project. So when Philly kind of originally got with the walla folks about what we would do together and now we're just focusing on peeling off the walla easement. So they did, we, we've done two already. The third one isn't going to be necessary until they're done because they have to build the road first and then, so we, they're already going. And I, Garrett can correct me if I'm wrong. And that was a confusion that I had to clear up because I think they thought they were waiting on more easements. We're, we're going to have to make that line bigger anyway at some point, but we won't do that until later. So we're, we're going to, they're going to go ahead and hook up to the existing line. Now they're going to build the road, hook up to the existing line now. If, they thought they were going to cross those three parcels and get to that strip. Now they're not. They're just going to go down to 50 and cross. I'm trying to say this, I'm looking at him, so he'll make the face if I say it wrong. That's, that's the last thing they said or that
Right. I mean, the last time we were still crossing the parts was going to the main hall right there by, um, Goodyear.
Yeah, it's right by Goodyear.
Yeah, so
Because that's the closest
Yeah, that's, the closest gravity feeder is, yes.
How many easements are there for that project and then the rest of the Water Main on 50?
There's a bunch for the Water Main 50 project, but I think we have legal descriptions for almost everything.
Okay.
But those easements, those haven't been converted easements yet. So as far as I know, there's only two easements that have been done. I think that's all we need to get them started and they are starting. They've already started working over there. So they were going to check with, with Lowmiller though, because I didn't, we, I should double check and maybe I can call you tomorrow, Garrett, we can double check.
Yeah, absolutely.
If they change that plan to go across, uh, rather than go down to 50, that would make a big difference.
Okay. Yeah, I, I hadn't seen anything. I hadn't seen anything on them changing that.
Okay. And I think that maybe that Dylan might be where some of the confusion was because they're going to cross those three parcels and that would be a pretty complicated process. And then there was a little back and forth because those were all private owners. It's a private project. So we, I kind of pushed it back to them to work, you know, whatever the various parties are to work to get those permissions. And we'll always draft an easement, but really those easements that were between two different groups, not us. The real concern was they accept and they assume for the utilities on the side of the road and then the easements that we
Okay. And then the last thing that I have is I would like to schedule a work session for sometime this week or the, not next week, but the following week. Um, I have questions about how our quotes go out and who has the authority to approve those quotes and stuff like that? Is what I want to go over. So I'd like to schedule a work session. If we're able to, this Friday or
It won't be this week.
Okay.
Um, won't be this week. But, uh, week after next, it would have to be either Monday or Tuesday because I'm on vacation starting Wednesday of that week.
Okay.
So you're asking about like quotes and bids for all departments, like
Um, mainly, mainly LMU. I mean, one thing that I've came across is, um, I've been deep diving in a lot of this, but there was a quote for, um, one of the local businesses, stuff like that. There was $42,000 in work that was done and we never received payment. So it was work that was done for free. Utilities are rate payer based. So when it comes time in five years, when we do another rate analysis, that's money that's going to go back towards, or that is an increase that's going to go towards the rate
You know which, uh, which, which, which project you're talking about?
It's the one, the restaurant.
Restaurant.
Yeah, Union Hall. And there was no vote by the Utility Service Board to approve that.
No, there's not been, there's not been anything, nothing has been given to that project yet.
There was $42,000 in conduit and stuff like that that was ran for them.
Yeah, but it has not been paid for.
I know. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But we've already done it and paid for it.
Well, I don't think that was strictly for, was that on the, the boring?
Right. I think that's what you're talking about.
The boring's not included yet. That's just for material alone.
We did the boring because that's the one I brought up with the change order last
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the rest of it is $42,534.14.
That's the material we're talking about.
That's the material, yes.
That was a quote. I got what you're saying.
But it has been done.
He's put that quote together and that stuff was in house, I think is what he said. Yeah, I know what you're saying.
And the work has been done, but we gave that away for free and that wasn't approved by the USB board.
Is that something that was, was you talking to Foreman Webster? Is that something that we just don't do? We don't usually give this?
No, we normally don't just give it away. I mean, normally it has to be paid for. That's why I'm bringing it up is if we're going to do it for one person.
Okay, we need
That's the conversation. Yeah, that's why I want to have a work session.
So you're asking for more of when do we, as a utility, um, invest in infrastructure on our, when, how do we make those decisions? Because sometimes we pay for it and sometimes we don't.
That's the big thing is, I, I know that things like this have been done in the past, but I would think that it would come in front of the USB board and not just be a blank check that's written necessarily. That's
Send that to me so I can all, all look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can have that.
So this is stuff that they're putting together for that job?
I'm pretty sure it's already been done.
Uh, the transformer and stuff's not there. The only thing I know of is the conduit.
Oh, is there a transformer on there too? Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's not even installed yet.
It says 150K.
That's just a quote. That's not even a project.
Okay.
It says the order number on there, so.
Yeah, but I don't believe it's been purchased.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you know?
I mean, we definitely don't give anything away for free. It would just be a difference between categorizing it as, does the developer pay for it or do we pay for it? And that now this is usually, what's our return? Are we going to get paid back by new rates? Or some, or it could be, was this redevelopment thing and maybe we should pay for it? So, yeah, we'll, we don't, I don't have the answers now, but we can get
Well, we can, we can send it over to you and talk about it.
Hey, uh, two weeks from now is St. Patrick's Day, so that meeting will be on a Tuesday, the 18th, by the way.
Tuesday, the 18th. Let me see. We don't observe St. Patrick's Day, do we?
Don't we?
I don't think that's a
So, I thought we did.
Was that part of the, was that part of the project?
Yeah. That's why I'm saying, shh.
I'll, I'll come over and we'll, I'll
I'm green bear. I'm green bear at the meeting.
It's just a quote.
Yeah, I see, it is.
Yeah, I was going to say, because I
Looks like they got a material list to move forward with that job. That was what it's got.
Yeah, because we were going to present that to the contractor. It was a quote that got, that came from Eric Webster. It was a quote, should have been, I'm, I'm assuming, that was a quote for the, the, the material and the transformer that had to be presented to the Tony Schroders group. Yeah.
Yep.
Because I know the transformer hasn't been, or we may have it stocked, but it hadn't been
I'd almost bet we probably do.
on the 18th work session, you guys okay with what, the time you want to do it? I've got a nine o'clock meeting already that day.
Since we don't observe St. Patrick's Day, we could do it that, could we do it before a council meeting, Monday?
Very disappointing that we don't celebrate St. Patrick's
Oh, you talking about?
Being guarded on that.
Oh, we can do it at the council meeting on Monday, the 17th?
Prior to that, that's what I think he
Prior to that, yep.
That's a good idea.
Hour, hour enough?
Yeah.
Let's do five o'clock, five o'clock work session.
Yep, good by me.
Good deal.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else under old business?
I'm worried about St. Patrick's Day is at all.
I didn't know it was on Monday. Sorry.
Five o'clock that day work session?
Yeah. 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 317 work session. Excuse me.
If you'd like, I can do an MOU, but for St. Patrick's Day, you guys can look at their work session.
No, it's okay.
I'm sorry, sir.
All right. Any other old business? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the claims.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. I'd like to call to order the City of Lawrenceburg Council meeting for March 3rd, 2025. I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One more time, Mr. Fetty.
All right. Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Councilperson Dylan Little.
Present.
Councilperson Tommy Rolet.
Present.
Councilperson Lenny Freiman.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Bonnurrit.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Delwell.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Malone.
Here.
Okay. Announcement, streets, alleys and curbs downtown, Mr. Abbott?
Everything's good.
Streets, alleys and curbs up on the hill, Mr. Freiman.
All good.
Finance Department, Mr. Bonnurrit.
No report, sir.
Parks and playgrounds, Mr. Little.
No report.
Fire Department, Mr. Rolet.
No report, Mayor.
I would have said that the playgrounds will get a lot of play here in the next couple of weeks. 60 degree weather.
They have the last couple of days when it was nice weather.
Yeah. Sunshine brings them out. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, new business, uh, Victoria, you wanna take the podium and this is for the O O R bid opening? Are you, you guys aware of what this is, is the owner occupied? We have, we have, uh, Grant?
Good evening, I'll do just a quick, um, update on the program, um, so the hope is to assist twenty homes by the end of the program. City has eighteen months to spend that money, um, we're only a few months in, so we're, um, doing good on progress. Uh, you should have in front of you a colorful spreadsheet just to give you an update on homeowners. Um, so in orange are the seven homes that we have sent to bid and we'll be doing the bid opening for momentarily. Um, the four in green, um, are ready to bid out, but we're going to wait to get these first seven under contract um, and then get those bid out probably next month at the latest. Um, and then that third group in pink is who we're currently working on, um, going through inspections and hoping to add to that, um, to get a larger group. Um, we do only have about five people on the waiting list after this group right now. Um, we had about six people fall off, whether they were over income or they just weren't interested anymore, wanted to do the work on their own. Um, so we are still taking applications and I brought Judy a packet of those, um, she'll have those at the clerk treasurer's office. If any homeowners want to apply, um, it comes with the brochure with the income guidelines, so that will be provided.
Did you, do we, we have that on our website too?
I believe we do, don't we, uh, Mark, is that under the clerk treasurer's website, the application?
Uh, we have some, we had some over there at the office, but I don't know if it's online.
Just in joint email.
I'll talk to Bryson and see if we can get that on there, if not, but we do have a pile of applications I'll take over tomorrow and I put them right inside the foyer.
It's a great program.
Yes, yes, it is a great program, so we'll do the bid opening for the first, uh, seven homes. I'll open them, read them out loud and Judy will record them on our bid tab for me. So the first one, um, let's do it in the order that I wrote yours down. Uh, the first one is Jeddah Electric, Jeff Fleetwood. Okay, so one twenty-five Heiner Heights is nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars.
What was that again?
Nineteen two.
Nineteen thousand, two hundred. Uh, three forty-six Short Street, five thousand, four hundred. One twenty-five West Center Street.
Can I ask a question first, Victoria?
Sure.
Are you, do you award this based upon the total or based upon each individual?
Um, so what, each individual home, so what I will ask at the end of this is that, um, you allow us to award to the lowest bidder but contingent on me taking these back to the office and our office reviewing these and getting OKRA release of funds, so.
That's perfect.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that last one was three forty-six Short Street, fifty-four hundred. And then we have one twenty-five West Center Street, nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. One eighteen First Street, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Two eighteen East William Street, ten thousand, nine hundred dollars. Four forty-three Arch Street, sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And two twenty-nine Maple Street, fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. So that's all for that bid. The next one is from Jackson Construction. One eighteen First Street, fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
How much was it?
Fifteen, two fifty.
What did you say? That says, okay, what did she say?
Uh, fifteen thousand.
Could you tell me who the first set of quotes were from?
Jeddah.
Jeddah?
Jeddah.
Okay, okay. Three forty-six Short Street, five thousand, two hundred. Two twenty-nine Maple Street, nine thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. Two eighteen East William Street, ten thousand, fifty dollars. Four forty-three Arch Street, nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. One twenty-five Heiner Heights, fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. One twenty-five West Center, twelve thousand, fifty dollars. That's it for that one.
Neils.
And then Neils Custom Exterior is the last bid.
Is that O'Neil, you said, O'Neil?
Neils, just Neils. He didn't want me to get into his. One twenty-five Heiner Heights, nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Two twenty-nine Maple Street, twelve thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Three forty-six Short Street, six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Two eighteen East William Street, twelve thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. One twenty-five West Center Street, fifteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Four forty-three Arch Street, twenty-one thousand dollars. Not bid on that one. What are you missing?
One eighteen First Street. Had them all in order and then he skipped to, to one twenty-five.
So he did not bid one eighteen First Street, so just put a slash through that.
Okay, so you're gonna take these under advisement and?
Yes, so I would ask that you just, um, allow us to award these based on the lowest bidder, um, contingent on us reviewing them and OKRA giving us release of funds once we provide all of the information, so. Um, typically it takes a couple of weeks, um, I know they're understaffed right now, it could be quicker, but that's when we'd be contacting homeowners to meet and sign contracts to get construction going.
I'm sure they're excited to.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, good, um, so can I, any, any questions for Victoria and Judy? If not, entertain a motion to approve, uh, allowing, uh, Victoria's group to take all of these and, uh, under advisement and then award them according to the lowest bid to the, to the, if they're qualified contractor.
Yes.
So move. Second?
Second.
Second, Brett? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Victoria, could you tell me who the second group was? The first one was Jeddah and then I have Neils, I don't.
Jackson Construction.
Okay, thank you.
What was it?
Jackson.
Jackson.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ladies. All right, any other new business or old business for council? If not, we'll have comments from the audience. Okay, if not.
You know, I did have a question today, I had a phone call, um, the pool, when, when is, when do we usually, cause they, somebody wanted to know how much a pool pass was and all that stuff and I was just.
We, we haven't even, we haven't even, uh.
So when do we usually do that stuff?
Latter part, March, April.
Every year, April.
I think it's April, we're, because I think the next meeting, uh, Jenny probably will be coming to get, uh, approval on, uh, manager and assistant manager, and I think after that it starts happening.
Okay. Yeah, I just kinda want, I'm ramming my head, yeah, somebody called for a pool.
Warm weather brings out everybody, ready for the pool.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're trying to rent the pool already.
Yeah.
They just call on time.
Okay, uh, entertain a motion to approve the claims.
So move, Mayor.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Did you finish speaking?
I don't think.
Is that illegal?
I was looking down, I was looking down.
Nothing he does is legal, Mark.
I'd say.
Go Tigers.
I'd say that motion is void.
That's, uh, tomorrow night, right?